Roll call. Here, here.
Here, here.
Yes.
Here.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Approve the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda? So moved. On favor? Close? Audience groups? We will all go over that and go to the carrying on the 2017-18 budget.
There is no question.
2017 budget? Team down, team down. Move on to that one. All right. Move on to the board.
As then, any questions?
Team down, team down. Superintendent's board.
Yeah, I've got a few things here. Two things that are usually in your packet and are on your board calendar are the application recognition of schools. State changed the law this year. We no longer have to have board approval on that. That's not the superintendent's role. So that is done and taken care of for our district. The other thing you usually see is our running start contract from RVC. RVC is running with those, but they are in the process of signing them up for October. Another thing that was online for you, for your board review was the safety work law. We have those at this time every year. Another thing that was online for you, for your board review was the safety work law. We also will have a final list of all the extriculous stipends and we'll bring that forward to you hopefully once we get a contract in place that has changed the dollar amount on there and give you a complete list with all those changes on there that could be impacted by contract agreement. Tomorrow through Friday, I'll be down in Springfield to the IASA conference. I'm anticipating a lot of information about the new funding formula as well as the ESSA guidelines that are now coming down for our districts. And I will hopefully have some stuff that I can update you with my weekly reports from those things. I want to thank Linda and Gunther Wolfart. They donated a piano to our high school music department. I know Johnny Lambert felt very excited and is very grateful for that donation and appreciate it. And Laura Martinez got back to me for a rescheduled dates for our workshop. She has the sixth, the seventh, and the eighth. Does this board have a preference which day? Seven would be a Tuesday, which is kind of a typical Tuesday. Just so you know what else is in there. The following week, we have a meeting, the fourteenth, and then our conference is sixteen through the nineteenth. So do any of those dates work? Do you have a preference on any of those? November. November six, seven, and eight.
I just saw it all after first year. Just not getting good going on.
Busy time. Okay. Yeah, let me see if she's got something. And she said she wouldn't have anything till after first year on that. So I'll reschedule her after that. Okay? Does that work for everybody?
Mike, Tom, Tom, there are about 7:00. Is there a mod of IATR?
Yeah, when we go to set that. Yeah, when we go to set that, I'll have you work. Alright, so it's Mike's. Sounds good. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. And then do you want to hear reports? Paul, Paul, do you need?
Paul, do you need to add any?
We do need to set one up. We have some policies that have come in and we'll try to send something for October. So maybe afterwards we can talk about a date that works.
Services committee?
Matt, he had a lengthy meeting. Julie was great, snuck up on the budget and answered all the questions. Most of the board members were in attendance. She also touched a little bit on the objective Lubbies, that math process. She has feedback on potential going on in the administration. Learned some of the hurdles and challenges for that. Something that we're looking at. See where we go with that. Also got into a discussion that we don't know. Let's do registration. So we'll be able to have that discussion as well.
Thank you. Sylvia's ready.
Yeah, we met over all the GIMs. Summer projects and some work to come. And the topic of funding for athletic stadiums and fields came up. So we'll talk about that a little more the next meeting and then we'll probably present something to the board at that time.
Thank you. Curriculum?
We did meet. Molly, did you want to say a few quick words about what you presented? I didn't want to summarize that for you because I assumed that I would just say they're still working on the science curriculum and then now working on a plan for math curriculum, but perhaps you'd want to say more than that?
Sure. Yep, we're continuing our science curriculum. Now we're, this year with science, we're going to be looking at creating curriculum guides for all the courses. And so hopefully finish those by the end of the year and we can start working on common assessments so we can really look at, see how we're doing. Math is starting. They actually had their first meeting today. It sounds like it went pretty well. But they are starting to look at their standards, reviewing the standards, unpacking them for, to really understand them. And then to look at where we are to help in our test scores, in essence, in the end. We know that we're probably going to need to do a six-eight adoption this coming spring as the priority and possibly a K-five. Our contract on our K-five is also going to be up soon. We're now on a year-to-year with them. So that's something to keep in mind, but while we're doing the systematic review, it's the perfect time to start looking at those resources too.
A couple of other items we had, or I had put together, and I'm sorry I hadn't really spoken with Brian on this stuff, but I'm trying to talk with him a little bit more in the future. In my mind, I thought maybe I would present to the committee, is there anything the curriculum committee should be doing that would be progressive and proactive and kind of far-reaching? Are there any topics or subjects or areas that we should attend to in the next year? There was a lot of discussion, but really no ideas came out of that. So I thought I might talk with Brian and you guys can let me know if you have any thoughts on this, of things to discuss or maybe reasons why not to approach it this way. But I was thinking, we typically sort of get handed things by Mike that are curriculum issues that need to be dealt with and it's usually a just, we've done this, does it seem good? And it usually does seem good. But it was really my sincere hope that we'd be kind of progressive and far-reaching in some aspect that the committee might see that we should maybe start working towards and setting a future goal. Again, there weren't too many ideas on that. And then my other idea that I put on the agenda was board presentations. I sort of threw out there that we're about to go to our yearly conference where we will be reminded that everything we do is supposed to be geared towards student achievement and we're supposed to see data, data, data. So it would be nice if teachers or disciplines or areas of the college or admin, I don't know if it's going to be admin or faculty that do it, but it would be nice if we saw a few more presentations about maybe again, some of those proactive, progressive, or maybe even reactive things that have been instituted to try and increase student achievement. There was a little confusion about what exactly we wanted, who should do it. So maybe that will be something we'll try and tack down in the future, but I definitely wanted to talk with Brian and see if he had any ideas of any new comment also and all the admin. If there's anything, I bet if we came up with a group of ideas and sort of presented them, then people might go, oh yeah, that's not good.
Thank you.
I had, I don't know if it fits right here, but Molly, while I'm thinking of it for curriculum in the future, can you think about or address with the admin, where will our curriculum be housed and whose role, because it somehow got dropped over the years, whose role and that sort of thing? I don't know who does that or?
So I can actually fill that in a little bit now.
Okay, go ahead.
The curriculum guides that we're creating will be housed, we've contracted with chalk.com to, where we can create right in there. They're a warehouse for us right in there. We can even house documents that like teachers create to use along with their curriculum guides. And then it'll be formatted into a map in a way so you can see, okay, the year progresses like this. I see that and then the teachers open the guide and they can dig down deep. So that will be housed kind of as an outside entity, but within the district administrators have, will have those, the big administration rights. And all the teachers that are working on it will have editing rights so they can, like the science teachers, high school science teachers will have editing rights for the high school science ones.
It's a software that helps us.
So it's software that'll help us manage it.
Can I ask, might that be yet another separate software that maybe at this meeting we can talk to again, somebody and see if there is already a curriculum aspect to lunches and attendance and registration?
And we've talked about that and I haven't found anything yet within anything, but we continue to bring that up as points too. Yeah.
We know a place you can go and you'll see a lot of those presentations.
Oh yeah.
Would it be of any use for the admin to, or do they have their own, Ed can talk about if they go to their own conferences sort of?
I think there's benefits to them going. I mean, I don't have them scheduled this year or locked in for hotel rooms, but I think there could be benefit. Other districts have brought principals in the past and there are some benefits there too. They see a lot of the same vendors type things at some of their IPA, but I think sometimes too, when you're at a conference with dialogue with board members and everything else, maybe for the future we could consider that.
What I've noticed in going, having been an administrator and going to those conferences, and I've been being a board member going to those conferences, the same people present significantly different information.
Okay.
Because the years there, one group's there, the budget, the money's not necessarily their priority, where the other group is thinking, now if we could consolidate all this other stuff and save money.
Right.
So.
Right, and looking at it from more that three thousand foot level than the five hundred foot level, many grades.
If that is something the board would like me to look at for next year, bringing administrators to help, I'm open to it. I think I'll have some administrators that would love to go. I don't know if I can bring everybody out of the district, but maybe some rotation with key people and something I could do if that's what I hear.
Or, and I don't know how this would be done, or while we're there, get four or five names and say they'd like you to come to a January, March meeting and present with the admin here, with all of us here. And maybe in 10 minutes they could hit the big picture. Or maybe not, maybe it would need to be a special meeting where it's, would be more conducive to a special meeting.
I know Ed last year brought some cards back and some stuff and we brought some of that stuff in that the administrative looked at. So, and if he did it similar again, we can bring it back and its IDs are in his band on the first.
So it's too late to get some of those guys in with the shirt?
For the principals, I could check. I can check. I can check. Yeah.
Kelly had asked me if I would look at my, the makeup of my committee and maybe some of you other chairs would be in the same position. We've got, I've got five or six people who regulate ten, but really aren't members and I don't know if we want to look at, we look at who's on our member list?
You sent your membership and list and I thought I'd give you a call. I'm going to be gone the next three days, but I thought I'd give you a call next week and we can work on that. Does that work? I'll check on the principals side of things.
Then I guess we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve or any discussion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, see, true. Roll call.
Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mr. Brinson?
Yes.
Mr. Moll?
Yes.
Motion carries. Move on to unfinished business, approval of the 2017-18 budget.
Yeah, we're asking the board to adopt the budget tonight. We brought this to the last three board meetings and as Mr. Moll had mentioned, we brought it back to the business committee last week with detail and our numbers remain the same, which as I alluded to before, reflect full funding from the state with the new equitable funding formula. So nothing really further to add at this point unless there's questions from the board.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mr. Brinson?
Yes.
Mr. Moll?
Yes.
Mr. Moll?
Yes.
Julia, thanks for all your hard work on that.
Thank you.
And then item B, the assessment update.
Yes, and I was asked to bring this back more than welcome, more than glad to do it. Last spring in May, we did present this similar report to our curriculum committee and it was requested to bring back in front of the board. We, Molly and I have looked at this and looked at the MAPS data and one of the things that you guys were talking about a little bit earlier is this, how are we using this data, data, data to look and make student achievement move? I just wanted to share with the board real quickly, some of the things that we've already put in place and we're doing as administrative team as well as teachers and as a district. We shared, like I said, the data with the curriculum committee in May. Then in June, all of the administrators got together, looked at MAPS data, PART data, all of our data through ECR and reviewed all that in an effort to kind of springboard and start to get us thinking a little bit about how to move our school improvement plans forward. So the start of the school year now, all of our buildings are working on the school improvement plans that we need to have in place for that. We are going to have the principals beginning in October and November to come in and talk to you guys about the plans, the data they've reviewed and the goals that they have for their school improvement plans. So that'll be in October and November. And correct me, I'm wrong, I think we said the middle and the high schools will be going first and then we'll do the elementaries in November. We have also focused a lot on collaborative groupings so that we give opportunities to teachers to come back and review what they've taught, review data, have opportunities to talk about what's going well in the classroom, what they need to improve. And that is kind of all built back into this reflecting on how can we get better and move that student achievement needle. And then the last thing that we are going to talk a little bit about tonight and Cheryl, I was talking with her a little bit before too, we have math in our targets and our sites this year because we know we've got some alignment to do there. We know we've got some improvement to do there and it really needs to grab our emphasis of time this year. So math K through 12 will be focused on as our curriculum focus this year as we go to align those standards and improve our scores there. So at this point, I will turn it over to Molly and I'll let Molly walk through the MAPS data.
So I know, I think you guys have my gross, my summary there as well as the data. So I'm going to kind of run through that summary. But as you start looking, I think we have the 16, 17, I was just looking at it. So what it shows as you start looking through it, the spring 16 and spring 17 data are those first two big columns. And so what I kind of did is I looked at, well, what are the mean RIT scores? That would be the mean of that entire grade across the district. So all the third graders from all the elementaries, all the fifth graders, all, you know, all the ones that took the tests. And they compared, they would have had to have a valid spring of the year before and a valid spring of this past spring, 17, to compare and look at the growth. So we, as we look down it, we see that the mean RIT scores all go up, which is good. For the most part, they do. But their percentiles are not. So the percentiles are the nationally normed ones. Like if you look at third grade, they were at the 44th percentile in 2016 and they end up at the 56th percentile in 2017.
So as you go across that graph, that's a cohort, right?
That's it.
Considered a cohort.
Mm-hmm. So that's that same group of kids. So they're, you know, those percentiles are kind of what I was looking at. How are we comparing nationally? And where are we? There are some that go down, you know, fourth grade went from the 55th to the 46th. So it's like, okay, what's going on there? What's up with this cohort of kids? Or what is kind of going on? Is this, does this happen from year to year to year? Yeah.
Ms. Lilia, as I was looking at this, because now I really wanted to try and understand this, I put my homework. Can you explain what RIT is?
Oh man, I knew you were going to ask that. It's.
It's something, something incredibly simple.
It is NWA score.
But I figured it out the other day. We always call it the RIT. It's something.
It stands for like reach in, ready, ready in the?
Ready, it's like they're, it's there right now. That's their readiness level to learn right now. That's, that's the area that they're ready to be taught at.
And it's a continuum.
So it is a continuum. And they do have this, I even have just a part of the packet. They have this huge percentile packet. Either guys don't have that. I don't even have that in there. They still talk about the RITs. I apologize for not knowing. I could email that to you tomorrow or later on.
No worries, but the other question was, if you're looking at spring, so the first column on the left and then the second, spring 2016 to spring 2017?
Would you want, do you want me to stand up there and point? Would that be easier?
Sure. Do we stay in the same, because Brian just said, and his is logical also, but I think the way I'm thinking about it is logical also, if you go to the fourth grade column, the fourth graders in 2016, are those the same students?
So this would be from their, their third grade year. Those are the same students. That's the cohort.
Also, it's all their class. Okay.
So those were kind of that. Was their mean score when they were at the spring third graders the year before? So that's kind of close across.
Because I was thinking they went to the next year.
So it's not like you're looking backwards.
Okay.
So that's the same cohort of kids. So like these third graders took that test when they were in the spring of their second grade year.
Okay.
So, you know, I kind of looked across, I looked at the percentiles in each column, like how are we doing? How did they grow during the year? You know, because we would like to see those percentiles at least remain the same or go up. We don't. So those are areas that we need to target. There's like Mike said, there's a reason we're targeting that. We realize that, I don't know, is it, what's the inconsistency? Is it in the text resource that we're using? Is it on alignment, not timing when we teach these things and when we take the tests? Is it that we're trying to teach too much in the time we have and we tell them?
So for everybody's, because I'm trying to back up a bit and make sure that everybody understands this. So for the fourth grade, they have a 202. That means that their average score, their, their level of understanding, is it what is considered 202, which really means nothing to us, but?
Which means they're at the 55th percentile.
55th percentile.
So in 2017, they went to 212, which means as a class, their abilities are now at a higher level.
Yeah.
So we would want to see not only those RIT scores go up.
Correct.
But the percentiles go up.
But the nation progressed faster than ours did.
Because there's a difference between their RIT score going up and the growth because we could have a very low RIT, like a student who's maybe at 100, who goes to 200 and they see a tremendous growth.
Right.
But they're still not at the class's average of RIT, which means, okay. So there's a difference between growth.
So that we're looking at achievement here. We're not looking at growth. So we're looking at what are our students achieving? Like our students are achieving in 2016, the third grade, the 44th national percentile. 50th, the 50th percentile for maps is our target. That's of all the kids, you know, all their nationally normed, that's kind of that target. That's what we're aiming for. They consider average from the 40th to, their average average is considered from the 40th to the 60th percentile. High average is 60 to 80 and high is 8 to 100. So if they're actually within that 40th to the 60th, they're considered average. So our achievement is average there. And their achievement here is 56th percentile is average. So then they go on in the next column and they start talking about growth. So there's the observed growth. This is as kind of an average of how much those kids pretty much grew. So mainly they grew, this first column, just doing third grade, this is the easiest one to find, they grew 15 points. And then, and that was the average change from the end of the term. Kind of ignored the SE because that's your standard error. So move on again into statistics, we can go there, but for now, jump over to projected growth. They were projected to grow 13.7 points by NWA. You have more growth at the younger ages and we level out as we get to the older ages. That's expected, that's typical. So they were expected to grow 13.7. They obviously, they grew 15, they grew more. So their conditional growth is that .51. So and that percentile would be the 69. So they grew more than was expected. So you kind of look at, I looked at mainly these three columns. It's like, okay, where are we at compared to national? How is north, are we doing? And then I said, okay, how are we growing? So this is where that growth comes in, not just that achievement, but where are, how are we growing? And we have some areas where we're growing and the higher the number, either negative or, the higher the number of negative, that's the least growth. If they're number positive, north growth. And then it'll tell you the number of students they added in and the count that was, that met their projection and then the percent of it.
Where do we see national norms up here?
As a percentile.
These percentiles, those are the national.
So that's where we're?
That's national percentiles.
So even if you look at, for example, and I don't mean to focus on the negative, but I think that that's where we would need the most growth. If you look at ninth grade who had a RIT of 234 in spring of 2016 and then a RIT of 233.
Correct.
Their ability actually, or their, their level of understanding went down. And so do we, do we look at those and think like, okay, we definitely know what happens or we definitely know what classes we're offering and what might explain that?
So two, some of the things that got brought up at that curriculum meeting was, some of the teachers were talking about, well, given that, you know, kids in the spring and so in the spring of these freshman years, sometimes they don't have the motivation to take a test. I did pull the winter data as I've been requested, it is not on this, right here. And interestingly, it's kind of a mixed bag depending on the grade level. Nine and 10 did better winter to winter than they do spring to spring. So for, I think these older range kids, that definitely could be that possibility that they just get them out by spring. We also, MAPS is more reliable, but it eventually tops out. So at the younger grade levels, like from eighth and lower, we know we're going to have systems and accurate data. Or you could have, MAPS is also, it's an adaptive test. So as a child takes it, if they keep answering correctly, they're given harder and harder problems. So eventually, you know, as a sixth grade teacher, I used to see my kids getting some trigonometry problems and they're looking at me and I'm like, sorry, can't help, you know? And so they're guessing really well. So we could also be having some instances where kids are, they're guessing really well because they're getting these harder and harder problems that they don't know. And so again, this goes back to our standards of how well are we teaching those things? And in the other aspect of MAPS being adaptive, when they start answering incorrectly, it makes it a little easier to, so that they can kind of figure out where exactly those kids are, so that where are they actually ready to be taught?
And do you think, Molly, some of the older kids have, they know this?
Uh-huh.
And they perhaps answer incorrectly to make the test a little easier? Some of, not all.
And I will tell you what I like about the new MAPS is if they see that a kid is just kind of messing around, they'll pause the test on you. That's one of the brand new things, pause the test. So they can hear, read, like, oh, good.
Or it can, it sort of intuits that they're, they've started guessing and so they're done with the test and it just takes that score.
It kind of pauses, lets the proctor know. No, it doesn't take that score, lets the proctor know that they need to.
What do we learn going forward about where we need to be and how we get there based on what we see?
The other thing that I'm going to work on with my, like my, my committee, my first one, those reports, is now with the MAPS, I can zoom down into the different ranges. Like I looked at myself, okay, my second grade, second grade at Manchester last year, I know they struggled with measurement and they struggled with number concepts and numbers and algebra concepts. So I'm going to look at those as two areas that I know we're going to have to take as our subject and think, okay, how are we teaching these concepts? How is it covered in our vision? And what are some other things we can use up in those areas? So this is where like administrators, we should go back to what remains and really dive into our data and see where we can go from there.
And it'll answer what question? What questions has it answered so far at some of the other levels you talked about, your second grade class on Manchester?
I haven't done the rest of them. I just started with the second grade. I just started with the second grade, start pulling them. We don't, we, for math data, the lowest level, we have the second grade. So, I just started pulling them.
That's why I'm trying to understand the process. So, by the time we get done collecting all this data, these kids are already through another year of school.
So, I can start pulling the, we just finished our fall test window, so our brand new second graders are in there. And I can get that data for those second graders. Second grader from last year tested in the spring, and so that data is still pretty valid. And so, we can use that with the third grade teacher. The fourth grade teacher, we can use that stuff in the third grade year, the spring of their third grade year. And this goes all the way up, like, Mrs. Moon can use the fourth grade data to help with their good grade class. So, we can continue to use it. And we get those results the next day. We dig in those results the next day after the test.
And Ed, here's, here's what I want them to do. Now that they see this data, you need to walk back to your teachers and talk about, how are we addressing this? How are we doing this through school improvement planning? And what are we doing to address it? Now, that's where they go back and they dig in. And I know that fifth grade, we talked about numbers sense needing to be stronger in numbers sense. How are we going to meet that then this year? So, it's not waiting a year. But then as a district level, I wanted the curriculum committee to focus on math across the entire district too this year. So, all my math teachers, we get together and we're lining at K-12, and we're talking about what's going on and what's, what needs to be better.
I think I shared this with a group before, but Mary and I went to a presentation at South Lloyd, where they took this stuff, this data, and literally, they, the next week, they'd already instituted changes across their whole curriculum to high school based on what they saw in that, in that test data. Principals were there, they were talking about, we were here, we realized that this wasn't done right. We went back and made this correction at all grade levels across the whole school district. And I guess, I'm kind of waiting for us to get to that point. I mean, the ability to see what you, what's wrong and make corrections quickly so that you can catch back up before you get out of a semester, I think would be incredible.
Yeah. And that's what, I'll be honest, it's going to take some extra, you know, work, you need the teachers to understand how to get in and get that math data. And so, the pencil that I'm working on, I'm trying to hold out for the teachers to get it out. But there is a lot of, to do for the data to help adjust right away.
So, we're hearing that one of the difficulties is even getting the data out, let alone looking at what the reasoning might be?
Right. The teachers will need you to, I don't know how familiar they are with getting in, extracting data, taking out the testing.
Which is then again, kind of where we come in, you sell to us that you need more of something, and this is where that would come in. Because again, I earnestly, I'm going to go...
Could be, or could be a focus of our...
...about how we can build achievements and get it all geared up.
Could be a focus of our professional development, and our SIP days are our institute days in October and February. So, sometimes we're making certain days where we focus professional development on those days, which is just focus on concepts.
You can also work with, you know, Jerry to do kind of what to do, like, the teachers moving like, "Oh, can I do this again?" And I know NDA has a lot of, it wasn't happening, it's like, they're doing a lot of, that are difficult to, I watched it.
Is this something that in my mind, you get four days of downtime and just churn out reports and send something to Manchester that says, "Manchester, third grade science, red flag here." And Capren Grade Schools, kindergarten, language arts, there's, we've got some issues there.
That someone would do that?
That you would push out to them and then get them talking and then report back to you. We've pinpointed what the issue is.
I think sometimes...
Or we're having difficulty pinpointing what the issue is.
I certainly have that ability to do that, and if I have four days of alone time. But I think there's a lot of value in teachers working at their students and their own data, and sometimes with others, to say, okay, yeah, I know this kid doesn't do well, but what else can I do? You know, and having those collaborative conversations to kind of start figuring those areas out.
Are they, are they doing that already, or is that something we need to...
We don't have a lot of time in our days to collaborate in conversations. I know my brother and I try to schedule, so we have some that I, I really love to have some collaboration time, but I don't know how much that is going on.
Yeah, it was like I said, one of our focuses this year was to help provide more of those times for them to get together and collaborate.
That's one of the things I think we talked about, excuse me, before, was the ability not only, you talked about, you said exactly what you said there. We talked about getting some more collaborative time, but we were going to work on structuring our collaborative time and work, work, what results we got. We were going to make sure that we got conversations and there were minutes kept and that we made progress in that collaborative time. Are we there?
We spent all last year with science collaborating resources, putting that stuff in. What are you looking for? Are you looking for, like, what was our output now?
No, I just, I think we said before, we were going to make the effort to create some collaborative time across grade levels.
And so, I've done...
We wanted to make sure it was productive.
Yeah, so I've got SIP days, our institute days are structured around this. We've got built into our budget, times where we can use subs for groups to get together. Cheryl and Molly have also kind of worked with groups of teachers too. Sometimes it's after school, sometimes it's during, what do they call it, planned times or common homeroom times. So, we're doing a wide variety of structures of all those different ways to get that in and incorporate that, so it's a lot more consistent than just October and...
I'll just go on. So, at the October institute grade, we have kind of a plan in place that, we have that science, but we are trying to get out there, and we have a structure that we're, before we're working with, that we can have, like, all the convergents here, all first grade teachers, all those technical reports, teachers together, and so they can talk about what's going on here, what do they see that they like, what don't they like? And then the curriculum team, if you go back and kind of create the guides based on those collaborative conversations, which there is a structure to them. But then for the 5'8" level, we're looking at having vertically aligned. Okay? So, how are we going to get the kids, like, these indicators by the end of eighth grade when they have the test? We have a test in fifth grade and eighth grade for science. How are we going to integrate those all the way through engineering, as just the example? So, the fifth grade teachers can kind of talk collaboratively, how can they build that from one level to the next level, to the next level to, like, eighth grade? It's not all imperative that we get to talk. Everybody's taking a piece of it, and everybody's kind of figuring out their way and trying to, but those are collaborative conversations. That kind of answer?
Well, I think that it actually adds to my concern. When we're talking about having SIP days in October to address what's happened from October until, August until October, we really only have four weeks of school left and a semester between that period, and we break for Christmas to make, to affect any real change, right? And how do we, if we're, if we're already behind in, when we took the test in September, we talked about it in October, we make some changes in November, how do we get all that time back? How do, how do we get those kids, if we, if we realize that we have issues, how do we, how does that get brought back in and get those kids back where they need to be?
So, one of the things, part of the idea of doing the collaborative conversations around science right now is that we can work towards that goal of being coming professional learning communities, where we have that time, some of those team collaborative times built in on a more regular basis, that we can have common assessments right away, within a week. Okay, here's how our kids are doing. You know, here's how mine are doing. Here's how Brian's are doing. Oh, Brian's is better than mine. What on earth is going on? How did you do that in your class? Okay, so you taught like this, I'm going to try that with my next unit. And even though that other unit has passed, you can do some reteaching, but you're also trying new things with your kids to help that improve.
So, for instance, in science too, you've had trainings with your elementary teachers and all of your teachers leading into this year, so that we've got stuff to incorporate into the classrooms already. That's the idea that's going to go on with math too. So, not just on SIP days, and then we've also, we're talking about the institute with the administrators, about what needs to be implemented. We've gone through trainings with the administrators. This needs to be what's implemented into the classroom. So, those are adjustments that are being there too. You know, and you're meeting with science groups still, not just on SIP days. So, there's still more meetings going on just outside of the SIP days, so that we continue to enforce what needs to be going back into the classroom and taught in the classroom. And the other piece that I want to, is I want to make sure that we don't go through this whole alignment process and then it sits on a shelf. I want it taught in the classroom.
By doing it in school, are we going to make sure it's actually integrated versus, you know, the more things, the more you talk about it. Back in the day, they went through a whole process of aligning kind of the standards and goals, and then it was a nice binder, and it went straight to the shelf. And we don't want that to happen. So, we want to take the time to do it right. And so, that's why we did one, that's, we spent time too, so we did one at a time. And we know math works well, and that's why we're really focusing on math, and that's why, you know, like, I know my school, my school is focusing on math as one of our, you know, I have it as one of my personal administrative goals, and I sit to you, ask that.
And now, in October and November, they will come to you and talk to you about their school improvement plans, based on what they've looked at, their data, their conversations, and what they're implementing this year. So, you'll see that in October and November.
Right. You know, one of the first things to recognize is we've got a lot of room to grow. That's how we live. We have a lot of room to grow. So, we're just, we recognize it, we can start.
That was the sort of thing I was wondering. This data and that plan, it's collected in October, could we maybe yearly in December, get a board presentation about here were our highlights, and by the way, here were our lowlights? And we've already met as teachers, would December be too early? End of each year?
So, maps, our next maps testing is December. We take December. So, you're kind of looking at tail end of December, right before Christmas, you'd have results in January for your maps testing. So, you could do a winner to winner comparison there. The next one you'll get is they will release PARC scores here towards the tail end of October. Usually what I've done the last couple of years is I've prepared PARC scores with it and given you the ECR, the results too, and we've brought that back in November. So, I was planning on doing that, but we can do it, we can do it differently with that. And I've kind of gone off the history of what's been presented and how before, but I've got many different ways we can present it and, but like, as you're looking at the testing, PARC data is going to come out here at the end of October. They'll take the PARC test, I believe it's the month of March roughly, right in there. So, we take then maps in winter, we take maps in spring. We do not take maps outside of second grade in the fall, because all the fall measures is how much you lost over summer. So, we're trying to save the kids some testing there. And not have them just test to test, so that we can see what they lost over the summer. We have a good solid spring score, we can do it again in winter, see some growth there, and then do spring to spring. We also talked about possibly even doing winter to winter if our, if our efforts are better there and with the national norms there.
Does PARC give us different data, or does it just confuse some people?
It's a good question. PARC's more of an accountability measure about, the state's accountability measure for college readiness.
So, perhaps as a board, we don't care about PARC data, or we care more about maps?
I don't know that I'll, yeah, I don't know that I'll ever say that. I'm going to say it's harder to, well, I'll let you guys say. I think it's harder to compare cohort, what do you want to say? Cohorts improvement in yearly process. PARC's a little, PARC isn't meant to grow, PARC's more meant for accountability. Maps is, is, still work with growth. And I know Jamie, and this might be some questions you ask him, Jamie and his teachers even work with independent student growth goals and targets that they sit down and go over with their middle school students. Maps will set it up so that even your student has an individual growth target that they want to see. Here's what we want to see in reading, here's what we want to see in language for you by the end of this year. And they will sit down and go over growth targets for those students too.
And when do we create, because that should, that should drive, at least at the curriculum side of our budget timing, yes? So, I'm trying, I'm trying to think of where this would fit in the calendar and work best for the teachers, work best for the data being there, getting some results, and then driving at least the curriculum aspect, which of course I see as self-serving sometimes this year, but if that should sort of drive the curriculum discussion.
So, your, what we're going to do right now for budgeting for next year, our math, what we're going to look to need to do for resources will be built into next year's budget, because usually we purchase that over the summer, and then that's something that's filled after July 1. So, that's what we'll look for is math resources, depending on the curriculum committee's recommendations, thoughts, and conclusions as they're looking to align their curriculum there. Envision math, like Molly said, we know that the version we have K through 5 is on its last year of, what do they call it? Online licensure. We know that our six, seven, and eight, isn't that the one that we've got, we know we've got gaps there, so that's why, yeah, that's why we, we know we've got to address that. That's why Molly said that that's probably a focus for some of our resources. And that's through conversations with teachers and feedback that what we're getting through testing and through, through teacher feedback as well.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Molly. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Molly.
As far as like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Molly, you keep glancing towards the back of the room, I don't have any idea who that is.
Oh, I apologize.
This is Cheryl D. She's helping with the curriculum. She's the entire administrator from Lobe Deer, and she stepped in and has been so far.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and I apologize, I should have introduced you. Cheryl, welcome. Glad to have you.
Very good. Thank you. She's been a godsend this year for people. So, it's been important to be a lot more time in the building, and I'm proud to continue rolling science in addition to something about math. She loves to do math, it's a great field.
I apologize. Thanks for bringing that up. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Molly.
All right, so we'll move on to new business.
Hold on, one thing I was going to add was, if, you know, even Joe, through the curriculum meeting, if you have some presentations or things that I can bring, I kind of talk to you a little bit about those test windows. They're, they're intermittent through the year. I mean, I, like I said to you, I've got a wealth of ways of, we've got data, 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 more data than we could probably ever use. But if there's something specific you're looking for, like I said, I've tailor-made it off the old process, we can change it any way you want it.
There's lots out there. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't take long to pull it. I like to spend a little time analyzing it before I present on it, and that's what takes more of my time, not the polling of it, but I really want to see what's going on there.
So, off this graph here, the one that I find that I use more is the maps. I want to see, like, for instance, that third grade, I want to see that their percentile has gone from 44 to, what is that, 56? I want to see that that growth is, is moving that way. And so, like I said, math, I can do winter to winter, spring to spring, and I can see a year's worth of growth on a kid, a cohort, a grade, check different grades. Map seems solid, PARC is a one, one-shot snapshot of that kids right now, once a year.
But again, Molly, this is just math.
That's just math. I think on the next page you have your...
Reading is in there too?
Reading is in there.
And language.
That's the reading. And then, language is taken at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, so you're only going to see it for those levels.
Can we factor in, by the way, just to look at that ninth grade class, not to poke at them, but at least mathematically, their RIT score actually went down. If anything, it should stay the same or go up a little bit. Do we, can, are we able to pull out all the variables? Is it even possible for you to get together and go, that's just a difficult eighth and ninth group, and nobody needs to really, there's not much we can do when you're working with a difficult group, versus, I guess, the most, the easiest data to analyze unfortunately would be a comparison of Capren, Manchester, and Pablo Grove across the board and see, okay, some schools are doing differently.
Right.
But again, they, they have different groups.
We'll be able to do that this year.
Is it impossible to really glean out all those variables?
It's a little tougher with, like, where those kids may have come from. I mean, they're together since fifth grade, but we can look at, like I said, we can get into the students themselves and see how each of them has done in, in each separate area. It also will analyze those areas and see how those kids are doing in, within those areas, which can help the curriculum side of things. Okay, we know we're struggling in our, in our number, number sense. Well, how are we teaching that? So...
How, when, what?
How, when.
Yeah.
And at the meeting the other day, I was just thinking, I didn't attend any of those presentations, but I was thinking, you know, it seems to me that somebody at Papa Grove, their ELA program would be doing something really innovative and actually saw some numbers go up. And they say, it could be other variables or it could be this curriculum that I put together. And there might be the other teachers there to see the actual numbers. And just in my mind, I thought that might be something the board might want to see. Or this is freshman X. They're freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year. Look, this is what happened with their math. Is even if we looked at individual students, I thought it might be just useful for the board to have some presentations on here, some success stories. Because sooner or later, we have to bring the red flags to you and you have to, you have to hear that what we're really struggling with.
That we are, yes, I understand. Okay, you're saying that. I will tell you, I just pulled, that's when I pulled the winter to winter, that ninth grade group last year, they exceeded their projected growth. In the winter. From the previous winter. So.
It fell off in the spring.
Could be the time of year, as some of the teachers had stated. But I will tell you, we're going away from MAPS at the ninth and tenth grade level and moving towards the.
PSAT.
The PSAT. SAT nine, SAT ten, and the SAT eleven.
Just to compound the things even more.
Right.
PARC is going away. We get rid of MAPS.
PARC is not going away yet. I don't know anything about that. Right.
But the one thing we do see with the high school kids is the SAT matters to them. The effort is stronger than SAT. It means something.
And I think with that master manager that the high school is putting into place, they're going to be able to look a lot more at how are kids doing? How are we hitting those standards? That's one of the things Jake kind of talked about is, and which standards do those kids, are they not doing so hot at? So even though the kids aren't going to, the high school kids aren't going to be taking MAP anymore, they're going to get that data from their other source. So it's still coming. They're still available.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to September twenty seventeen bills. Ryan, is your month for bills?
I think it was mine.
Oh, it's Delta.
As near as I can tell, everything will fine. So I'd make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Nash? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to special education, special education twenty seventeen eighteen workload plan.
Yes. Each year Molly works with a committee of special ed teachers to review workloads. She has put together a plan for you and it's something we ask the board to approve every year. Melissa, anything you want to add to it?
I'm sure. This is something that we do every year. It's an admin department by the state. So I send out an email and invite all of our special teachers that want to come join us. We talk about the caseload. Izzy gives us kind of a recommendation of, this is what, if you're a social worker, this is about how many kids should be on your caseload. And they factor in all the other things that special ed teachers do and social worker students do. And so basically our plan is just what, you know, workload versus caseload, what people do if they feel like they have too many kids on their caseload, what that process looks like. And then we reviewed it and the teachers were all on board with what puts a good thing here. Any questions?
Nice to see you again, Melissa.
Nice to see you.
Yep, asking the board to approve the workload plan.
So moved. One second.
Roll call.
Yeah, I think you better roll call though.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Nelson? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. McCorris?
Yes.
Mr. Randy?
Yes.
All right, bond restructuring.
Yeah, at our last business meeting, Andy Arndt was there and presented some information on restructuring our bonds that our district can possibly level off some of our large expected spikes in the near future. Andy's here. He's brought back some proposals that were requested by the board the other night. So, thank you, Andy.
Thank you for having me back after how we didn't surface the board and ask them to do it. I hope that, I think you were going to, wasn't there? So if you're catching up, if you want to go through your ask, I have a question or anybody go through to ask. So basically I was asked to come back and specific looks and for that structure and what we could do if we adjust it? And what that would specifically mean to homeowners or a home value of a hundred thousand dollars. So just a quick look right here, this first page is the existing structure and things right now. The left-hand side is if you did nothing with the, the CBA, the foundation of the base, we have kind of in the, in the base. There's the two of the eight of them numbers that you guys have set aside and then what we'll call the existing debt levy. But existing debt levy is what is actually anticipated to hit the goals and be asked of the tax base over the next several years. So on the next page, page two is really kind of a content page. And basically starting on the left-hand side is that net levy. And I was asked to look at the, an option, the first option I brought, I think I had that at the last week was, if you just extended the debt by two years, what that would look like as a structure? And then like I said, I was asked, is that okay? Do I need to hold it?
No, it just needs to be full of integrity.
Okay. So let me know if I'm doing anything wrong.
You can't hold it if you want to.
Is that okay?
Yeah, make you feel like.
Very important, yeah. Start walking around the room. So basically what we're looking at here is options that extend the current structure by two years, three years, four years, and five years. And then the final column on the far right also extends the debt by five years. But this is that descending option that I think Mr. Kinzer, we sort of honed in on that idea when we were talking at the last meeting. So in the first example there, the two-year option, any of the numbers that you see in green with the parentheses around it, that represents a reduction in taxes when compared to the same year's existing levy as it stands now. So really all we're doing is comparing the twenty seventeen existing number of two point seven million to the new net levy of two point three million. When we look at a hundred thousand dollar property, the approximate change in that tax bill would be a reduction of about a hundred and ten dollars. And if you go down to the following year in twenty eighteen, that same restructuring, the same structure, a two point three million dollar payment would be a slightly higher reduction over that climbing payment in the existing structure. So as it stands right now, every year those payments are going to go up to some degree until the final year where there's a considerable drop. So in the two-year option, you have several years, it looks like about seven years of reductions in payments before you have additional payments that didn't exist previously. And at the very bottom, that total of two hundred and seventy-five dollars, that is actually the net total over, I believe it's a a ten-year period, over a ten-year period, that homeowner would pay an additional two hundred and seventy-five dollars on this portion of their tax bill in that period of time. So it's very minimal when you talk about extending debt, adding interest costs, those types of things. As we move across the table, the three-year option obviously is going to come at a slightly higher total cost, but it's going to allow for further reductions in the payment. So we go from two point three million in that first option down to about two point one million. Stretching it out four years brings it down right to two million even. And stretching it out an additional five gets it down below two million. So you can kind of peruse those numbers and just see that what you're going to be doing is adding stability to the tax rate that you're putting out to the tax base. And so when you have other volatility of the village, you have your operating side of your levy, all these other things that could go up, could go down, that you can't control. This is the one piece that you can do something proactively to control and try to stabilize. So the idea on the descending option kind of came up as, and I, it was, I believe it was Mr. Kinzer that pointed out that even if you do something here, you still have the operating side that's theoretically going to be rising by CPI every year. If you're trying to capitalize on every budgetary tax dollar that you can, that might be climbing every year. What that option specifically will do is actually have reducing payments on the bond side every year to sort of combat that increase on the operating side. We can't promise that it's going to make things completely static, but that's the attempt that you could try to achieve there. So I'll take a breath. And if you guys have any questions or comments.
Do any of the numbers and as they go down, do they compound every year? So year twenty seventeen's a hundred and ten dollars, year twenty eighteen's a hundred and twenty-four. So those two years, it's a two hundred and thirty-four dollar reduction?
You're not, it's not a hundred and twenty-four on top of the one twenty.
So just another fourteen.
Right, right. And on the flip side, I guess if you did, if you didn't do anything, there'd be a similar increase in the levy every year until the time that the debt is paid off. So I think one comment, this also came up in the last meeting was, what are your plans down the road? You know, your plans eight years from now or ten years from now is, are you going to pursue a referendum to try to be able to piggyback a new building at the end of when your debt is going to be paid off? Or are you going to let it fall off and leave it there for the time being? If the plan is to pursue a new building at some point, the descending option probably isn't going to be the best one. Because you probably want to keep something static and be able to build off of that in the future with an additional levy that's going to help you build or renovate considerably an existing building. But if the plan's right now is, we don't plan on doing that. We want to maintain what we have, that could be a viable option. Otherwise, the other four are pretty similar in, in design. It's just what's palatable? What are you trying to achieve by reducing these levies?
So Julia, right now we're comfortable with the two point six million that this year?
Yeah, in that gray line at the top, that represents the taxes being collected this calendar year. The twenty seventeen levy year, that two point seven million is what will go on the rolls for next year's collection.
So the two point three is going to be a little bit of a reduction for everyone the whole way through?
Correct. And something else to note, which actually surprised me, is the descending option. If you look at the total row all the way at the bottom, the total cost is four hundred and fifty-five dollars. That kind of falls right in the middle of the table. If I had lined it up by the total cost over the ten-year period, that one would fall right in the middle. And the reason is because even though you're stretching it out five years, you're making higher payments upfront and then having them fall. So it makes sense. Upfront, I didn't imagine that would be the case, but that's how it turned out. And then again, something like this, you basically have the authority to do at any time because these are voter-approved bonds. You can decide to refund these for whatever purpose you see fit. And the timeline for something like this would be approximately four to six weeks with a board meeting smack dab in the middle.
Julia, can I ask your thoughts?
That would be something that you, as a board, are you planning on doing any large room on? Or if you're not, I'm more for spreading it out, spreading the debt out and letting any new people that move in or people that move out pay for what's going on now. I mean, if you're making everybody pay for this next six years, so all, well, all of a sudden, five years from now, a subdivision moves in for unbelieveable, they don't have to pay for any of that debt, but their kids are coming to school and using these facilities. That's my theory on it. I mean, we did that at Rockton, we spread out our debt, and we got the fee too much, taxes were going up. CPI goes up, we want that money because we want to be able to grab that CPI money because it goes into the education fund. This is bond fund. You can't use this for anything else but paying bond debt.
That's helping you offset the inflation too, right, for rising costs and salaries.
That's why you want to do the CPI because of the rising costs, the cost of food, the cost of materials, the cost of health insurance, that stops the heat. You know, the only time I would pay it off is if you're looking at, hey, we're going to build school, we're going to go for referendum. And your story would be, there's not going to be any additional funding than we already have because those are falling off the books. So what we're going to get is going to be no new, no addition. That would be the reason that I would only pay them off.
Even though if we did pay them off, couldn't that potentially bring more growth to the area? If our taxes went down?
Would it bring more growth?
I think it, couldn't it bring?
It would, but when I bought the house, I didn't go to Belvedere and ask for the, for their bond payments. I bought the house because.
But if the taxes.
You're talking the taxes.
The location.
But if the taxes were specifically, I think everyone who talks about taxes and they will look at properties. And I think we do discourage people. So I understand that the taxing makes complete sense. But to say we'd like to keep them level, I get it. But we also have reserves that we could use to pay these down.
But then, I, I don't know if I would pay reserve. I would, if you have reserve, I would use it to be paying your property. Pay that for maintaining your property. You already are getting that thirteen million.
Would it be correct of me to think that with the tax situation that it currently is? And it, and potentially, best case scenario, slightly going up over the next ten years, it would look very bad of us to plan any large development or any capital expenditure to then try and do anything huge? That perhaps what we should begin in getting this paid down, it would look good to the taxpayers to get this paid down and begin a long-range plan for something ten years out to begin once we've got this all set, paid down? Does that make any sense?
I know what you mean on that.
That no matter what we do, if we plan anything large, taxes already being what they are, we plan something big. I can't imagine it's going to go over well.
If you're planning on something big, no, I wouldn't do that if you're planning something big. I wouldn't do that. But if not.
We really could, if we don't do this, taxes are going to decidedly go up. So we can't talk.
They're going to go up.
We can't talk about any large building project with taxes going up distinctly.
And I wish I would have talked to Andy prior to seeing this, is that he doesn't show what the taxes are going to go up. He's only going to show what reduces this.
Right.
He doesn't show what the taxes are going to be with that, when it goes to three point four million dollar payment that we have to make. He didn't show that.
That's right.
And that probably would have been like, whoa, is that a five hundred dollar increase in my tax, my tax bill for that year? I mean, is that what you're one of, I mean, you're not seeing that.
Right.
And that's probably what I would have more likely liked to see is, maybe what is it if you don't do anything, what's the tax bill?
I did a, I did a check of the first year and not the last year, not where it's a hundred and twenty-six thousand or twenty-eight thousand, whatever that is. But from the first year to the last large year, for that homeowner, it would go from about six hundred dollars up to nine hundred something over that course of time. So one year it's six hundred something, the next year it's slightly higher, slightly higher. There are some considerable jumps where it's closer to a hundred dollars, but then it ends up in the nine hundred dollar range somewhere out there. I did a quick check just to make sure that my math in these tables was correct and it turned out to be. So, you know, I think Mary, you might have brought it up that by the same token, having debt paid off might draw people in. Having taxes going up over the next few years, people might look at that and say, you know, that it is high and.
Well, I think also, you know, we, people have talked about our fund balance. I think you'd say we built this cash reserve on the backs of our taxpayers as a taxpayer and I don't know. I mean, that's, I've just heard different things. So I think, you know, we, are we going to have to do something? Absolutely. It's just what do we have to do? And that's where I think everyone has to decide.
I came from a district that had no money.
Right.
And it's, it's like a privilege to come with the school that has money that they, what do we do with all this money that we have? When you have, and so that's why I'm at a point where I wouldn't want to be put into that position of not having to be able to make decisions about money other than cut, 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 cut. Because that's not a place to be at. That's why I don't know if I would give that money.
Well, I'm just saying, it's five and a half million dollars to state. The level of the two point three is five and a half million dollars.
What was that?
It's five and a half million dollars.
I don't know if I would go to five years. My idea, I liked what he did in the, the descending one. I mean, the very last one. And or like the three-year one. I mean, three years on. I mean, is that ending a lot on?
Because even these years where it technically shows an increase, it's going to be similar to what we're paying currently. to what we're paying currently.
Right now, our debt is going to be...
Like, it's just going to extend what we're paying.
But it's not going to be the increase that we might see if we don't do something.
Right. We aren't going to see that big increase, and then it's going to, we're going to just keep that payment for an extra three years, and then it will go away.
Well, I'll just throw this out there as my opinion. I would go for the two- or three-year option because of the savings that it'll give the taxpayers over the next few years. And I wouldn't stretch it out any farther than that because I have no crystal ball to know what's going to happen in this community, what's going to happen with a lot of these really aged-out buildings we have that is going to have to be addressed. Yeah, we might be able to get four or five more years out of them, but that's the monkey on the back that's coming down our road. And the two- or three-year option does help the taxpayers, and it will make the area a little more interested, people moving in. And if we get some growth, that's fine. We'll pay their portion because they're going to get it too, once their house is done and they're here. And that's going to help us because we need enrollment.
And we need to not have the highest tax rate in the entire area. Need not be, that's, you don't want to be number one for that.
I like the two-year option just because I don't think you're gaining that much by adding a third year. It's costing us $400,000 to add that third year, and we're not really giving, you know, we're not saving the taxpayers that much money adding an extra year.
What are we looking for tonight?
Tonight was mainly information, but if, you know, do you guys want to bring it back for the October meeting? Do you want to narrow it down? You want more discussion? Give me some direction from the board. Tonight was here.
The last piece of the meeting from last week that I brought was just a look at interest rates from the last 30 years, and they're near the bottom. So now is a great time to be considering something like this. But the timing is up to you guys, if you decide to do something. And in December, the Fed is talking about trying to increase rates again another quarter percent. If you want to get ahead of that, keep that in mind. If not, that will affect these numbers, you know. So I'm not going to speculate, but if rates go up a quarter percent, you know, the two-year option won't be achievable with that amount of savings, it might have to roll a portion into the third year to get to these same numbers, just kind of hypothetically speaking.
Is there anybody here not ready to move forward or something?
What do you think, Tom?
Well, I, my thing on this, I would be ready to move forward. I don't know if I, if we're going to be able to get a consensus on it. One of the things that I'm concerned about and why I brought it up, and it's twofold with me, is I'm concerned about the overall tax burden to our local taxpayers, property taxpayers. As much as I despise the pushing the debt out and that descending option and looking like that's going to cost us about 1.8 million to do that, I tend to go more with the argument that putting some immediate relief on our taxpayers today and, Julia, I think probably I would make the argument like I did in the business meeting, that I would be a hard sell on a vote for going for the full levy this year with the additional money from the state. Whether I would win or lose that one in this particular year, I don't know. But getting an option to where our business manager is happy because she can put the full levy out, but our taxpayers are buffered and don't see that increase because we kind of back end, we've done just the opposite where we're trying to anticipate what that increase is going to be every year, and we're thinking with our crystal ball that it's going to be a 0% net to the taxpayers. I kind of like the descending option for that reason, that I think a real estate person would tell us is that we're given, we're making our area more attractive, trying not to stay at the top of the tax rate. We're hoping that by doing that, we get more taxable property in here and kind of spreading it. And, you know, the idea that I'm worried about building a new school or replacing a building, boy, wouldn't that be great, that we have those kind of enrollment numbers? But I'm thinking we probably have enough additional capacity. So as I'm throwing the dice and trying to read the crystal ball, I'm thinking that descending value is probably the way I would, even though I don't like it, but I, you know, I kind of see us here that we misread the crystal ball before, and this is what we've ended up with. But this gives us the most bang for the buck and at least gives you the option to come here and ask for that CPI increase every year and thinking that we've kind of offset the effect of it. So it's a long way and it's complicated, but I just, I kind of like that last option. And because if I don't get my, let's not do the levy this year, it softens the impact to our taxpayers at a cost, at a cost.
For the most part, I think that's where I was at too. I came in here with my mind made up that the two-year option was probably all I wanted to look at for some of the things that Tom talked about. If you look at this going down with that argument in mind in the back of your head, I really think that those are probably the only two options here that really make sense for us to consider is either the two-year or the descending. I really think that I tend to side more with you in saying that it would make Julia's life with as, or the next business manager's life a little bit easier in manipulating the CPI and the levies to maybe go with a longer-range plan, provide some relief on the backside to this bond issue, and allow us to use the levies to balance up some of our other funds.
I think Tom just expressed what I was trying to express earlier, that this is not important. And I just, I understand your argument, but something feels right about extending it out, although something also feels very wrong about extending it that far out. But I think I'm kind of leaning towards your side also.
Originally, I had made this table go out 20 years so that you could visually see that you could take it out 20 years. I just know that that's not feasible, so we capped it off. But there are districts who say, 20 years, send it out, you know, and if that's what they want to do, you know, we'll do it. But, you know, this is kind of a reasonable set of options. And what I was going to say is, in the next six to 10 years, if you're going to target any type of new building, a referendum for any type of major projects, any one of these options puts you in a better position to be able to accomplish that with the tax base than the current structure, unless it was going to be at the very end after it drops off.
Yeah, I still just feel that if we're going to run a surplus this year, anything that we're going to do is going to build our surplus, and I feel that in the end, that will probably cost us money.
What's that?
I mean, our reserves are higher than they've ever been, and I think it looks like we're going to have probably a pretty decent year again. So if we continue to build our fund balance, which is very comfortable, believe me, it's nice to sit on a big pot of money. I really, I really relish that. But it gets fought over by everyone.
Yeah.
And I think the taxpayers have done a lot for us, and it, you know, it's definitely the financially responsible thing to do is because in the state, our hands are cuffed with so much by how the state runs itself.
Right.
And how they dictate us to run things that, like I said, my comfort is going to be, would be to not lengthen anything out and use our resources to get through this ourselves.
Just so that I'm clear on this, Matt, the fund balance that we have, if you wanted to, like, my understanding was, the only thing we could not do this year is we, to help our taxpayers is, in like, affect the fund balance would be to not levy, not go with the CPI and levy.
I believe we could pay on bonds.
Could we pay on bonds with our fund balance? I'd...
You probably could.
Yeah, you can abate some of the bonds. But our... You guys are never going to get that money back. You still have an interest on those CDV bonds that you could abate. Because then, you know, coming down the line in a few years, you could just abate, more abate to the taxpayer with the interest from those bonds. Or you can do some projects with that. You have not done, you haven't set up what you're going to do with them. Right now, the interest is just a curve, and you haven't done anything.
And that wasn't budgeted in any of these future tables for abatements? It was just principal, is all it was?
Just principal, yeah. The interest, and at the time, I want to say at the end of June, accumulated, maybe around $13,000 for that.
Couldn't we hypothetically, with this fund balance and the descending option, keep taxes level and still be doing something, building and refurbishing with this, with that fund balance?
We use some of our fund balance to redo some parking lots.
Yes, that's what I was...
Because you kind of mentioned sitting on it and growing, and I'm thinking, it wouldn't need to be sitting on it, it wouldn't need to be growing. We could be doing some pretty...
But then you can go into O and M and project fund, and you can do, you know, a bunch of projects with them, with projects with them and do stuff.
We could do some of those big keystone projects that people would notice are being done while keeping taxes down at the same time. That seems like a good plan, but...
Kind of a win-win.
It's ironic, right? Three months ago, we wouldn't feel comfortable to have a conversation on fund balance. I mean, we were worried about whether or not payments were coming, whether we were going to get a payment, how we're, you know, trying to keep six months in reserves.
Were we going to be balanced?
And next August, we're going to be in the same boat.
Yeah, and we're going to be in the same boat. Now, all of a sudden, it's, well, we got too much money in our pocket. We got programs that we haven't put back, we had projects that we've kicked down the road. We have places to spend the money that we have if that's what we decide to do.
Right, and you have the fund balance to do that. And you bring some projects and use up to the school that we've got a first student, that the taxpayers can save.
I think we could do some significant projects and still keep a nice fund balance that would get us through three to six months of the state.
Can it get worse?
No. Don't say anything.
Sorry.
Challenge politicians in Illinois.
Provided the state is whole this year with what they say.
Right. Part of the other options I brought was talking about the expiring working cash authority that you guys have, and we were talking about the projects and things that needed to be tackled too. So that, obviously, I mean, the message was loud and clear, there was no desire to do that. But I know that there are piles of projects that could be attended to.
For sure.
Yeah, Jim had quite a list. So, I...
Could you do the two-year option and then maybe look at it in a couple of years and then flip to the descending?
You could, yes.
Again, depending on interest rates and...
Yeah, I mean, the assumption would be...
It's the worst part, I think.
The assumption would be that...
I don't need to make your government.
No, what I would assume...
It's a way to find a middle position.
Yeah, I would assume that when you do the second piece, rates will be higher, which means, you know, would these numbers be achievable or not? And if they are, would it mean stretching it out even further? When rates go up, that's what I mean, you'd have to stretch it out further to get the same result, basically, so...
More than likely, wouldn't be any money savings in there.
What do you mean by savings? Like, additional year-over-year? It would show some. It probably wouldn't be as, it wouldn't be comparable to this because you'd be starting at a lower level, and then you'd be stretching it out, and it would be a narrower margin. It's something you could do, I think. Right now, where rates are, you probably would be better off deciding on one or the other. But you could certainly do that if you wanted to.
One of the things I was thinking here is, you know, all your positions are just four years, and you're making a decision that could be lasting for 10 years. Yet, take four years, all of your bond, the debt's paid, there's a lot of you that don't want Manchester or Peter Close. Another board is coming and say, hey, we're out of debt, we're going to build a new school. And I think, in some ways, if that's not what you want, like, you know, into the debt outstanding, you're going to have to... And that's one way to...
That's a bad way to think. You have to do its best and protect the school.
Here's another, kind of along those lines. If you didn't do anything now, and you went for a referendum in year eight, where it goes from 3.7 down to 100,000, you could theoretically go to the tax base and say, we're going to build a new building, and it's not going to cost you any more next year than it did this year. That means that $100,000 levy would go up to 3.7, and you'd carry that forward. That would allow you to build, trying to do some math in my head here, I'm probably going to fail, like a $30 million building.
In the Tatcham Hall.
So, you could do that. Or in the far-right column, where it gets down to about 1.2 million, you get out to that point, you could theoretically go to the tax base, say, we're going to build a new building, and it's not going to cost you any more than it did the year before, and that would be about a $10 million project. Now, that's math I'm doing in my head, it could be wrong. I have Xier Tech in my system, I don't know what that does to math abilities, but, but that's kind, you know, if you think you're going to do a brand-new freestanding building, and it's going to cost, the numbers are high, you know, these days. That's a consideration. What's that?
Here, a few years off, so you've got to add the numbers.
Right, exactly. Right. So, you know, that's something you could contemplate as well.
Isn't any large building project like that something that's at least, even if it began today, like, four or five years out?
It's usually two to three. I mean, once you know what you're building...
The high school, I think, was about a two-year from the time they said...
And we're not there with enrollment.
Right.
We're there with some big projects. I mean, the more I sit here and listen to everybody's opinion, and you got this 2% interest rate stuck in the back of your head, Mr. Penzer and Mr. Mulholland got good points. Let's take advantage of that and use the descending option.
I don't think we're going to need a new building for enrollment. The only thing would be to replace aging buildings. Do we fix it or replace?
Two years' interest goes up to 4.5%, we lost, we lost the taxpayers a lot of money. I'm sure we'd all run out and refinance our houses if we could get a 2%.
I'm willing to move with the descending option. I'm willing to move, go with the descending option.
Can I, just one more question on it.
Yeah.
Are any of these, I seem to remember something on these initial set of bonds, that one of the issues we came into is that they weren't callable.
Right.
Is that the same, can these other ones here be, where we can call them, or is that not possible?
I believe all of the building bonds outstanding are capital appreciation bonds, which means that they're not callable. So you can't call them in for savings. There's not going to be an opportunity to refund them for true savings. And what I mean by savings is not extending and reducing payments.
Okay. And you can't do that on the new ones if you're refinancing?
The new ones, you could. So, for example, the new ones will go out 10 years. The typical call provision is 10 years, which means that the first 10 years of debt service is not callable. We can usually get to seven or eight years, which means the final two maturities of that hypothetical descending option might be, they could be callable and they could be refundable for savings if interest rates allow down the road. But the remaining debt outstanding would not have that option.
Okay. Or if by some financial, we have the means to pay it off?
Sure.
Or whatever the case may be. Again, the crystal ball.
Yeah.
That was really misread.
And it does, it makes more sense when you use fund balances to pay off that service. Usually, it makes the most sense to call in bonds that are callable, and you just don't have those available to you. So you'd be setting aside money to pay for principal and interest instead of calling those in and just paying the principal balance and getting rid of the interest cost, so just...
The only reason I would, I don't know, it just would seem like if you did have a construction project and you were writing something that might, you might, if you were funding a new project, you could maybe refinance them or something. But callable just gives you more options, is all right?
Yeah, when you're talking about, like, building bonds for a new building, those, my assumption is those would go out 20 years, and those would have, a majority of it would be callable.
Okay.
Would have a 10-year call or eight or nine. Usually, what we push for is the shortest call that doesn't hit you with any interest rate penalty. So investors will say, I want, I want 3.5% or if it's callable, I want 3.7 or something like that. There's a cutoff where they say... There's a cutoff where they say, we'll buy it at the market rate, but if you push the call date too early, I want more yield because chances are, you're probably going to call that bond, and I'm going to be forced to reinvest in five years instead of 10 years or something. But those types of bonds certainly would have a call provision.
Still have a motion?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion?
Can you read the motion one more time? I just...
The motion is that we go with the sending option.
So, in the discussion, the only thing I would say is, you know, it seems like we're, in the end, spending $1.7 million over a lot more years to save, you know, of what actually is $3.7 million, or $3.4 million is the increase total over the years of our bonds. So, we're spending $1.7 to structure out $3.4, which, that's where my problem lies with it. That's all I'll say on that.
No further discussion, roll call.
This is Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
No.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Reverly?
Yes.
Mr. Connsell?
Yes.
Thank you, Eddie.
You're welcome. All I need, and I'll talk to Julia, but talk about timing and where you guys want to see that ball on the calendar.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you very much.
Done by next Tuesday?
Sure, we can make it a weekly thing.
PMA investment?
Yes. Thanks again, Eddie. We discussed this at our last business meeting. PMA had concerns about one of our investments. The committee asked to grab more information and a kind of an opinion from PMA, and I was to reach out to Kent at Papa Grove, Kent Keneep at Papa Grove State Bank. I'll start first. Kent was working with one of his resources and did not have something back. He sent me an email this morning, or, excuse me, late this afternoon, and said he just didn't have it back yet, so he couldn't weigh in on it. Julia, I know you spoke with PMA, and do you want to share with me what they're, what they felt? This was the vice president, I believe, you talked to.
Yes, the normal guy that I work with, Jay Key, spent there maybe three years in him and his mentor, or the ones that originally called me about it. And when I sent him an email from your, the board said that they wanted their opinion of what they would do. So, I sent him an email, and the vice president of PMA called me. I wanted him to put it in an email, but he didn't want to put it in writing, his opinion, and I'm sure that they're told not to do that. But his opinion was to hold and to wait on it, because just the week or week and a half that they talked to me about it, the bond rate, the interest rates went up, and when interest rates go up, the bond rate goes down. And the cost, so, and like, and he said, the bonds are at their lowest right now because the regular interest rate goes up, the bond rates go down. So, at this point, we would lose about $3,700 trying to call it, and he thought it wasn't worth, it wasn't, he felt it was not that much of a risk at this point to call it. He would wait, but he said they will watch it for us, watch very closely, to see as things happen. He said, you know, it doesn't, we don't have to call it right now, he said, but we can watch it. And that was his advice as the vice president of the PMA. But I, it's funny, they don't like to put anything in writing. Must be a legal thing, but that's what he said.
That investment was $613,000?
Well, it's six, actually, it's 635 million, 635,000 was in there.
Julia, can we find out what authority that the bond was issued on? If it was tied to a referendum or tied to a, like, a working cash or just, can we find that out?
I don't know if they can or not. I mean, I can ask them, but I can ask PMA, because, I mean, they were buying all kinds of investments. I don't, I mean, if they look at, they did have the Q SIP number, and I gave it to Mike because that's a bank ask for it, and so maybe...
They were going to do a little searching off the history of it through the Q SIP number.
I'm not sure what that is.
I'm not sure either, but...
The Q SIP number is a number they give to...
It sounded pretty perfect.
To bond, it's a coupon number?
Okay.
And maybe they can research it through the coupon number, and they call it a Q SIP number. I don't know what it stands for, don't ask me. I don't know what it S stands for.
Okay.
My thought is, I mean, we're going to lose $3,700 if we call it.
Mm-hmm.
$3,700 seems like a lot more palatable number to lose than 635.
But he said, I mean, if the outcome, they won't, I did ask them when the last time their rating changed, and it was June 2000, this last June, 2017. He said they won't have another rating for two years. So, it'll be where it's at, the B, it's at B, B+, not triple B, B+. It'll be there for two years. They won't get rated again. Granted, I think their outcome is negative, looking at their financial status, but, you know, like Ted said, that the bonds, they pay the bond, I mean, they pay the bonds first. They collect that money from the taxpayers, and it goes in that bond, and they're supposed to pay, but, and I questioned them on the fact that they had $8 million, but their bond payment was 12 million, so, and they didn't, they don't have any money left in that bond. So, I, I don't know how they'll pay those bonds.
I was in St. Louis twice this summer, and...
They only pay bond payments once a year.
I'm a little excited, the St. Louis area is not a vibrant, economic-moving kind of a state.
But the part that I don't understand with it is, if Julia was to get a payment from Boone County for one of those bond payments that are coming up this year, and it gets deposited in the account for that bond thing, and then she diverts that over to the education fund and doesn't pay the bond that's due that they levied against? That's the part, if it's that type of bond, I don't understand how that happens.
They're general obligation bonds, is what, you know, Kent was saying.
And what are the repercussions for all of them if they do that?
But are they levying against that particular, that's, that's the part...
What happens?
Go ahead, Tom, I'm trying to listen to you.
But that's the part that I'm not understanding. If they're levying against that bond to make that payment, and then they get the money deposited, and then, in Julia's case, if she went and used it for something else, I don't understand how the, it's not like the money's not there, they're going to levy against that bond. That's, I, I don't understand how we have it at risk because they haven't got...
It's not insured. That's what's the risk, because it's not insured.
It's insured, but it's insured by the taxpayers. That's that...
There's a lot of schools that...
The devastation in the area, people are going to be walking away from their houses.
People are not paying their taxes.
Okay, but what happens in Boone County when you walk away from your tax bill? Somebody comes up and buys those tax, those at a tax sale, and the school district ends up getting it.
But they don't get 100% of those tax sales. This will, gets it to the highest bidder, or the property does. But there, the whole thing is, if everybody's walking away from their property, no taxes that are being collected, that's my thought, is how are they making their payment when their bill was 12 million and they only had eight in there? They only received 8 million, but their bond payment was 12 million, so that's telling me that they didn't collect taxes to pay those bond payments.
But PMA's recommendation right now is, is that we hold tight, we watch it very, very close.
Right.
What I would like to do is hear Kent Keneep's opinion.
I think we should table it till next month, and we hear from Kent.
And as soon as I get it to, what I could do is update the board with what that opinion is, and I think that might be another factor to help sway with the decision.
Right, I mean, this guy does this for a living, I mean, investments. And he said, vice president, he said his opinion, he would hold.
But it's not his money either.
No, it's not.
It's not in writing.
He didn't want to put it in writing either.
Do we have an option for partially calling back some of it, or do we have to take all or none?
It's all ours.
I'm sorry, Mary had a point she wanted to make, too.
Something kind of covered. I mean, like, you know, if they can levy 12 million, it doesn't mean they're going to get it, because every taxpayer may not pay their taxes.
We don't get all of ours here.
Right. And maybe Mike will hear back from Kent in time, if we have to meet next week, we can bring it, have it all the next week, definitely, with my trust.
Sure, I'll get that opinion.
We'll probably be meeting again.
All right, so is there a motion to table that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's tabled. Is there any further business to come before the board? All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
No closed session tonight, no. We're waiting to hear back from the teachers' union, we'll meet tomorrow night. I was so unsure to move there.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry to disappoint.
So, we have a motion? Do you still have a second?
A second.
Mr. Hazelworth? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Julia, I think you're really confused, didn't you?
We discussed another issue. What's that?
No, there's no personnel tonight.
Nope. Um, hold on, though, do you need to have board members sign budgets?
Everyone has to sign the budget.
Before you leave tonight.
In order.
In the same order. So, thank you, guys, before you take off.